Pledge of Allegiance? I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you. Good evening, everybody. As everybody gets settled, I do want to note for the record, Shannon, you're on the phone, and you can hear us?
Yes, I'm here.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah, I'm here.
Yep, thank you for doing that. So I just want that for the record, that she is here remotely after Policy Committee. Is there anyone here for public participation? No one here for public participation? Okay, we're going to move to Report of the Chair. Just to keep up to date with the Board on our committees and liaisons, we do have an opening for CES representative. I know that's a tough one because they meet at like 3:00 or 3:30 in the afternoon, so if anyone wants more information on that or can attend those meetings, let Joe or I know and we'll get that filled.
I do think they are hybrid meetings.
Right, the second's...
Oh, Dennis is sitting on it.
CES? You're able to go, Dennis?
Well, as long as it's remote, yeah.
Okay, okay, okay. Let me put that down. Thank you for that. That takes care of that. Thank you very much.
Is this for the CES?
Yes, Shannon. Dennis is available if it's remote, so he's gonna...we're gonna put him on.
Oh, awesome.
Okay, moving forward to the consent agenda. Does anyone have any questions or comments on the minutes that were distributed? No? Does anyone have any questions or comments for Ron or Joe on the wire transfer or the warrant? That was in our packets. No? Pretty straightforward from what I saw, so would someone make a motion to approve the consent agenda as present? Sorry, presented. Jerry, seconded by Dennis. Any discussion? All in favor? Shannon, in favor or against?
Aye.
Okay, it's unanimous then. Thank you very much. We shall move on to the reports of the committees, and we will start with our student representatives who are hiding around the corner. Here they come. Good evening. The floor is yours.
Good evening, Massey Board of Education. I hope you're having a terrific first Tuesday of 2023. Massey Robiris will be having their next competition on January 14th in Bolton. Students are working hard to prepare in the meantime. Additionally, midterm season is drawing near. The first day of midterm exams will begin on next Friday, the 13th, and continue the following week.
Over break, boys' basketball faced tough losses to Basak and Greenwich. Tonight, the boys faced Darian home, hoping to improve their record of 3-2. Girls' basketball faced Bethel and Trumbull last week also, winning against Bethel and losing in a close game to Trumbull. Tonight, the girls face Immaculate away. Meanwhile, indoor track will be having their first meeting on Thursday. Thank you and have a great evening.
Thank you very much.
Dennis has a question.
Dennis, you have a...sorry.
robotics is having a Bridgewood Islander fundraiser on the 7th.
Dennis, what's that?
Bridgewood Islanders are doing a fundraiser for Massey Robotics, basically, on the 7th. If you care to go.
Yep. Shannon, Policy Committee met this evening, correct, and you'll have some recommendations for the next agenda?
Correct. We will have a couple policies to bring up at the next board meeting with two of the Board, two of them we don't get to a little bit.
Okay, thank you. Does anyone else have any committee reports? No? Hearing none. We'll move to the Report of the Superintendent. Joe?
Special education report.
Okay, thank you. Jen, go ahead.
Just like the month of November, the month of December, we saw an increase in enrollment in special education students. So we had two students register in district who were already identified. We had one student who we dismissed from services, and we had 12 students who we made eligible for services. So that...our current total is 556. We're still at that 16% mark right now for the average within the district. So as you can see, this trend for the past two months, we've had 23 students who are made eligible for services, and I just want to make a note that 11 of these students that were made eligible in the past two months have...are preschool students. So our current preschool number is 98, so we have four classes of kids with a total of 98 students in those classes. So as Joe and I have discussed earlier this year, we anticipate this number will grow in the coming months. So with that being said, it is time to revisit our discussion of opening a fifth classroom in preschool. That's something that we need to be talking about moving forward. Questions about enrollment? Okay, so looking at our financials, our tuition public line on page one decreased about $21,000. That's due to a student returning to district, which we're thrilled about. Spending on the transportation line on page four has increased about $7,400, and that's due to the fact that we have a student who's using transportation and needs some extra support in that transportation. So we had to add some support within there. So those are the changes that we've had so far, and all the other lines are pretty much the same as they were last month. So do you have any questions for me?
No? Any questions for Jen? No?
I do. I'm sorry, Jen.
Go ahead.
So if I'm...just want to clarify, you have 98 pre-K kids evenly between four classrooms?
Mm-hmm.
So I'm not going to do that math because it's going to make me...
So we're like...well, they're pretty much evenly. We're averaging like 18 students per classroom right now at the moment. But it's just...it varies right now because there's kids coming in and out. We also have our...you have to remember, we have itinerant students that are coming in and out just for speech only. So those count in those numbers as well because we are servicing those students.
Services take place mostly in the classroom?
Some, yeah.
Not like speech and...
Not speech. Not...some speech is push-in, but OT, PT, some speech pull-out. So we...it's in and out.
So you have two speech pathologists here in the same office?
We have one speech pathologist that's full-time, and then we have another speech pathologist that's with us, .3 for the week, and that person is in one of our other classrooms. She's in one of the four classrooms, servicing just that classroom.
And then you have two...sorry.
That's okay.
You're going to kick me out of the seat. Two BCBA's across the district that also service pre-K.
We have...correct, but we are actually looking at hiring a BCBA starting...she...this RBT who's wonderful at pre-K just passed her test. We're looking at hiring her, so we'll have a full-time BCBA in preschool.
Thank you.
Yes, but the other two are doing the whole entire district.
So you get to stay for a moment.
Any other questions?
Good? Anything else for Jen?
Thank you.
No, ask away.
I'll be back on Thursday.
Okay.
Thanks.
Thank you. Joe, that's all you had for...
That's all I had in front of everyone's spot. Thank you, Jerry, for picking up. I don't know why the section sizes in our...in the enrollment tab, excuse me, did not include our STEM teachers. So I think there was instructions there on...
This one, remember?
Yeah, put in and remove from that section there, sections five of your budget books. And now it has the STEM teachers included.
Sorry, Josh.
No, I don't know how we missed it. So, thank you. With that, I'm going to turn it over now. The purpose of most of the rest of the evening tonight is to go over our budget workshops with all of our schools. We have our three elementary principals that are going to go first, then Julia Strong from the middle school, and then Steve Swenson from the high school, along with Craig Sample, who will give us an overview on athletics as well. So...
Are they using the Board?
They will be using the Board, yeah.
Okay. And then what I just wanted to say to Board members is, please keep in mind of the superintendent's budget, 5.02% is contractual obligations, which leaves us .75 that we're looking at. Doesn't leave a lot of room. So as we're hearing these, you know, the requests for staff and requests for increases, that's where...that's where our focus is and what we need to scrutinize. So, all right? Thank you. Go ahead, Joe.
Good evening, everybody, and happy New Year. We'll start by saying...here we are. Thank you to Chrissy for being our budget liaison this year. It was nice meeting with you, and we were happy to share about the elementary budget with you. So we want to just kind of focus us a little bit, and knowing that everything that we've asked for in the elementary budget, the biggest driver of that is authentic and meaningful instruction for all of our students. So as we explained to Chrissy, the elementary budget works in two ways. One is we have budget lines that we control at our level. Those are the lines that we can spend throughout the years. Throughout the year, it's on instructional supplies. And then there's another part that we ask for, and we basically make requests of people and their budgets. So we might ask Joe to put something in his budget, or we might ask for something from the PD line or special education or that kind of thing. So we'll split it up that way for you tonight. The first is the budget lines we control, and those are really just instructional supplies. We've done a lot of work over the last couple of years in calibrating across all three schools. So you'll see that our budget lines are really attributed to a certain number per student. So for example, we might have math instructional supplies or $5 per student, and that's how we budget that way. A lot of the things that we use at elementary level are consumables. So, you know, paper, pencils, things like that, so that we need to replenish those each year. Something new this year is that we added in flexible seating. So we're looking to add a very minimal amount at each elementary school for flexible seating, and there's a lot of reasons for that. One is it supports students' social and emotional learning because we talk about, you know, if we ask a student to get lost in a good book, but then how many of you like to get lost in a good book while sitting at a table and, you know, sitting on a chair and a desk? So a lot of them like to get comfy in a corner or sit somewhere comfortably, but also it gives different sensory input to different students who have different needs. So there's a lot of just research behind flexible seating and why that supports. So you'll see that even up through the high school, that flexible seating is something important. So those are really like the budget lines that we control at our level. And then the things that we've asked for and received in this budget are, number one, the first is kind of a trade-off. We have our instructional...we have our coordinators, elementary coordinators across the district right now. What we're looking to do is eliminate that position and instead change that position to instructional leaders. So they would continue the calibration and collaboration that they help us do across all three schools right now. So those are...like, right now, I'm talking about Roseanne Houghton and Kim Nelly, our coordinators. Right now, they help us, and I would say that there are a reason why all three of our schools were schools of distinction last year because we have them in these positions. And so they're going to continue that really good work, but in addition, they're now going to shift over to being administrators so that they can support the three of us with things like teacher evaluation and the things that we do at elementary level that we're really kind of one-man teams down there. So they would support us in that way. We are asking for an additional teacher at Stepney because we are increasing from three to four sections in the fifth grade there. And then we've asked for three additional high-impact math specialists. We have them already. We have one in each school, and we're asking for one additional one in each school so that we can support math instruction.
Kelly, can I jump in quick?
Yeah.
Joe, help me on this now. Make sure I get this right. So to switch from instructional leader to instructional leaders, we're looking at a total expenditure of $10,000?
I think that's what we...
About...
For all three schools?
Yeah.
I just want to make sure that's all.
Yes.
Thank you.
A lot of bang for our buck. Yeah.
What about the...I brought this up last time, the high-impact math specialist. What qualifications would the person need to get that job?
So while we'd be ideally looking for someone who's certified, it's not...
A requirement.
Yeah, it's not a requirement of the position.
Because someone certified in math is going to get picked up in a hurry.
Probably.
Why would someone certified in math want to be a high-impact?
I mean, it depends. We've been really fortunate, and some of the high-impact math tutors we have now actually do have a certification, but they may be coming back into a career after raising children at home, so they are specifically looking for part-time. I mean, it would be absolutely awesome to get somebody who's certified, but it's not a requirement. So the next best thing is somebody with a math background, maybe a former accountant, somebody who was formerly a math teacher but is just looking for less than a full-time job. And I think the theme here is we were looking for things that would have a positive impact on student outcomes while still being fiscally responsible.
Another big bang for our buck.
And those folks also work very closely with math.
With Roseanne, yeah.
Yeah, so she needs to train them.
Yeah, and they sort of work under a certified teacher. So in, you know, there are certified teachers who are helping provide that instruction to them.
Would it make more sense, instead of three high-impact people, just to hire one certified math instructor and I pick low?
I mean, it's a good question, and we did talk about that. I think, as Kelly mentioned, like what we're trying to do is get people working directly with students in small groups. And so these high-impact math specialists will be doing just that. They'll be pushing into classrooms to deliver instruction to work under the direction of the teacher, and they can also be pulling kids out. We worried that with just having one person, while you gain some things, you miss out on the opportunity with direct time with students. It's tough, but we felt like this was a good way to go.
Right now, we have those...the folks that are in the positions now are there for 25 hours. Doesn't even at...I don't know about all three schools, but I know definitely at one hour and probably at 70. Doesn't even give them time to get into every section of their classes now. These guys would get there in two sections. I hear what you're saying, Alan.
Yeah.
And that was definitely a good conversation that we had. If we had one person, what's the trade-off? Do we got to have someone working with kids in every building, every period, or someone that went from building to building every day?
No, I'm just concerned about the certification.
Yeah.
I mean, someone certified is going to know how to differentiate and all that stuff, but someone who's an accountant may not know how to...
Yeah, it definitely is tricky.
Alan, I had asked the same thing when I met with the principals, but as we were talking it through, I was really thinking about the impact directly on students and knowing that Roseanne is going to have her hand in it, obviously, in training them and working with them on how that rollout is going to go. I think that, to your point, one person is not going to...how much impact can they have across three schools for kids that really need that instruction in a small group or one-to-one? There isn't enough time in the day, not to mention how many miles they'll be in the car.
That's really it, believe it or not, for elementary. So any questions? Any more questions?
Any other questions? No?
Can you break down kind of what flexible seating looks like in your classrooms in each of the schools?
Yeah. So we have classes that have, you know, certainly traditional chairs, tables, but then they have stools that the kids might...or go down to the carpet and bring a stool, or there's wobble stools. So a student could potentially be sitting at a table, working while wobbling, and that's totally appropriate for them to do so. There are stand-up tables so you can learn while standing up. There's...I've seen, you know, tires with comfy seats in them, beanback chairs. It really ranges, but a lot of them now, more so, are really sensory input-driven. You know, some kids just need different things. They need to move throughout the day, or...and it gives them that input. They can move and wobble while learning.
I'm laughing because I'm wobbling sitting here right now. So you're an adult, I'm doing it.
We did have, like, a... Those are some examples. Just it ranges from comfort to function, really.
Is it geared more towards the individual student? They could pick and choose kind of what they are looking to...
Yeah.
Or what suits them?
We try to give them a voice and choice, and, you know, some rooms just have maybe two ball chairs, so the teachers might let them choose which kids are going to get to be on the ball chairs. But sometimes you'll hear a teacher say, "Pick a smart spot." And so students can rotate and kind of decide what works for me and my body and what do I need right now to be a good learner. So...
You may see, like, some of those stools, like on the bottom, right, that are different colors that are tiered in heights. Like, you might see one or two of them at the small group table instead of five hard chairs.
Yeah. And you may even see students in, like, prone position without even flexible seating.
Right.
It just depends on what they need, yeah.
Thank you.
Mm-hmm.
Anything else?
I just want to say, I really appreciate, you know, the thought process that you guys put into changing those coordinator positions to instructional leaders. I just thought that was brilliant to really, you know, get more impact, you know, for you guys and in your work, but also for the students. So I appreciate that. Thank you.
One of the things we've also tried to do across the Board at the elementaries in the past, I think the past three years, we might have really considered that for creating equity, and, you know, I thank Lee, Kelly, and Ashley for working really closely together to, you know, they look at math supplies and social studies supplies and science supplies. It's not a huge budget at the elementary schools, but it's applicable across the board. That to me is very important.
Is there any positions you didn't get that you wanted?
The answer is yes.
Next, Jackie Hall.
So I think, you know, as we proposed positions, what I appreciated during the process is, again, the driving force is what's going to have the most impact on students, and we could...we could less, you know, love, but these, as a team, all administrators, we really looked at what's going to have the biggest impact. And that's even the math positions. You know, we looked at all avenues, and we really do think, although a certified position would be ideal, this will really impact our kids, and we'll be able to work as a team to kind of utilize those. So yes, is there a wish list? Of course. But we think this is a thoughtful list of...
Responsible student syndrome.
Yeah.
Alan, just so that you and everybody listening understands, the first round, and Joe, correct me if I'm wrong, the first round of budget requests was 19 new staff members about that.
For the elementary?
So, system-wide, system-wide. So I give a lot of credit to all the administrators and Joe and Sheila and everybody for working together and getting down to the handful that we're at.
Yeah, I was just curious, like, what type of positions they were looking for. I'm not saying all, let's throw them all in the budget. I'm just kind of curious.
Yeah, absolutely.
Like, what those positions were.
So initially, the high-impact math was three certified teachers.
So Joe, or really, I should ask Kelly, if I'm looking at the enrollments, the enrollment projections, you're going up a section next year in pre-K, right?
Yes.
So is that on Jen's end?
Yes, you'll see the preschool teacher in the special ed budget, yes.
Thanks.
Mm-hmm. And hopefully a space too in the special ed. Just kept on that, man. I was kidding.
What about ESL? Is that going to go from 1.5 to 2?
Yes.
Anything else for the elementary principals? No? Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Hi, everyone.
Hello.
Happy New Year. I'm Julia Strong. Welcome. Thank you, Dennis, for going over everything with a fine-tuned comb with me.
Good job.
Nice to talk it all through with another frugal Yankee. So we gave it a good...we gave it a good scrub. So looking at the budget for Jackie Hall Middle School for next year, we started with enrollment, analysis. Right now, we have 778 students at Jackie Hall, and with just bringing the eighth grade up to Massey and the fifth grade into Jackie Hall, that would be 754 students for next year, which was a drop of 24 students in enrollment. I got excited about that. It looks like a section of sixth grade, but then I took a look at last year's projected enrollment into this year's actuals. So last year at this time, we thought we were going to be down 39 students, but actually, we are down six students from last year, but, you know, we got 33 more than we projected. So I don't anticipate that that net drop in enrollment will hold at Jackie Hall, but we budgeted for, you know, a consistent, like a flat enrollment, not a gain of students. So really, it seems like the big expansion that we're seeing at the elementary school is really there at the moment, hasn't hit middle school quite yet. So we looked at just being as, you know, as invested as possible in everything that we have and getting the most out of all we're doing this year. We do not have an FTE proposal in this budget, so we're looking to be flat with staffing for next year. There is a special education teacher that will serve Jackie Hall students that you'll hear about from Jen, but under the school budget, that one doesn't appear. Overall, the entire budget for Jackie Hall, I think it's about $150,000, including instructional supplies, operating costs. And unlike the high school, the athletic budget is within the school budget, so that's instructional plus athletics. There's a few notable increases that we offset by tightening up in some other places. One thing I noticed in giving Unified Arts a close look this year is that our equipment in the tech ed class is not the latest with the safety guards on it. And so because of that, when students are using the table saw, the teacher has to be working with them one-to-one, and kids have a more limited access to doing some of this hands-on work. In middle school, that Unified Arts model, you know, every kid takes all the electives in rotation, and, you know, developmentally, it's still important to expose them to a variety of different skills and hands-on learning. So we do have 550 kids, you know, going through this classroom. So having this SawStop table saw, which prevents chopping your fingers off, would be helpful for the kids to be able to do hands-on learning with all digits. So that's in the budget. And we kept that in because it does impact so many students. There is an overall increase for buses, as we know. We've been talking about that all year. So you'll see that in the budget. And unified sports, we have really seen a big expansion in interest and participation at the middle school level. And special ed's been so wonderful about finding grant money and funding it, you know, around the edges over the years. But with the increased access to it, we put in specific funding, just as if, you know, just as if it was, you know, an inter-scholastic sport with a supply budget and uniforms and all that. Even though they're done as usually jamborees, you know, they're not direct competitions, we added a line to fund it in that same way. And then anyone who's been doing home improvement or anything the past couple of years would attest. It's just been increasingly expensive to fund the hands-on supplies for some of these classes, so those costs went up a bit. We found that as we came back to in-person learning, we didn't return to all the paper use and consumables that we had been using prior to remote learning. So we're able to continue trending down a little bit with our central supply costs. And since technology is more and more sort of infused in instruction, we don't need some of the specific technology line items. You know, I think back in the day, Jackie Hall had to budget for the Scantron machine ink so you could pass the papers through and things like that. So we were able to tighten up some of those lines to offset some of these other new costs that have come up. So Jackie Hall is no new staff and plus about $6,000 overall for the whole school. Any questions?
Go ahead, Jerry.
May I add, the SawStop is not a want, it's a need. You know, it's a requirement. And if we went as new, we wouldn't have a choice. So please don't look at that like, wow, that's...I mean, that...any school that opens now has to have that. It's just how it is. It's a requirement. That was it. Sorry.
Thank you for the tech ed shout-out.
Says the wood butcher.
Yeah.
Jackie Hall's experience is losing...
Just the teacher.
Oh, my gosh.
Just the teacher.
I think the other thing with this budget that you all need to know, and I think it goes back to Mike really, is the way they've been getting supplies, lumber, and other things, you know, to keep this budget down, it's just been outstanding. The teamwork is unbelievable. So keep it up. I think I highly recommend what's being presented. I mean, I think it was a very well-thought-out budget and very minimal increase. So, thank you for meeting.
Thank you.
Julia, this includes STEM?
Yes.
Okay.
So we budget the school for both campuses. Some of the facilities costs in STEM are handled through Massey, like custodial services and that sort of thing. But when we do central supply orders for paper, we bring a portion of it here for STEM. So we try to keep the school to campuses for budgeting.
Thank you. Any other questions for Julia?
The computers at STEM, they're all ready to go.
I think we do not have one...we don't have one Chromebook for every single student. You know, we continue to provide Chromebooks on an as-needed basis.
And I mean, I think a couple of years ago, maybe three years ago, some of the computers weren't able to run CAD or whatever.
Yeah.
Some of the computers had to be upgraded.
Yeah, so the technology education class at STEM is not in need of a technology upgrade. The computers in tech ed over at Main Campus, which has more of a hands-on shop component to it than the technology education class at STEM, those computers are definitely, you know, towards the end of their life. But just like we did with the art and design class at STEM, where instead of asking for a whole bunch of Photoshop licenses, we did some PD and some curriculum work and found Google Draw and a lot of apps that work through the Chromebook, we're looking at, for the computer, for the design component in the tech ed class at Main Campus, looking to get more out of the technology that we have rather than look for these proprietary licenses and upgrading the hardware, since that class has more of a hands-on focus for kids. But yes, the ones that are currently in there, they're elderly.
Of course, I'll probably address some of that, Alan, next.
I was just going to say, yeah.
Because we also, in conjunction with the town bill, Berkeley did a really nice job of putting together a grant against the technology at the schools.
Yeah, I don't know if the Board's aware, but we got a $200,000 grant, IT grant, so we'll be applying... So we'll be applying some of that towards, you know, Paul's capital rotation. And Julia, definitely keep Paul up to date on all that. He does a really good job of, you know, making sure that all keeps up to date.
And moving him around, yeah.
Yeah.
Okay. Thank you.
Jerry?
Yeah, I'm gonna put on my educator hat for a minute. So Jules, the thing that really got me going through your enrollment was the amount of classes over 25, like some 28, 29. I'm talking academic. So what are you doing innovatively to handle a class of 28 in a science?
I'm looking at the UA schedule. So as you know, the times that teachers get their preps and where kids travel outside of their academics is based on their music enrollment, their gym class, this and that. And so when we have music enrollment changes over time, which we're, right now, we have great new hires of music. Our fifth grade instrumental program is going awesome. And so we have this burgeoning enrollment in band and strings and choir, and that's awesome. But it tips the balance. And so if you want me to track through the 28s and find you the 19s opposite them, I will. You know, our overall average is in a good place at both campuses. But, you know, we didn't deliver the exact even class sizes that we wanted because we're gearing towards choice.
No, I understand.
Yeah. And in middle school with Unified Arts, the kids take a set rotation. The more choice you give them, the more unbalanced the class sizes can be if they all go in one direction or the other. Or like, one cool kid drops from, changes from one music to the other, a whole bunch of kids go with them, and it's a little hard to adjust. I think when you look at Mastic class sizes, you see the class sizes a little bit all over the map too, for that similar reason, is getting a master schedule to behave. But we don't want class sizes of 28. We like our nice round 25s.
I would pay support.
Thank you.
Help them pick out the cool kids and just move them to where they want.
Yeah. Is All-Star gonna be able to provide busing for Jackie Hollow?
That's been an issue for us, not just at Jackie Hollow, but at Mastic.
Yeah, but for Jackie Hollow, you don't have any busing, right? For sports? So for the fall season, for cross-country, you know, for those meets, we provided busing. And then towards the end of the season, there was like a wave of illness, or the bus drivers were out sick, and we had to do a charter bus, like a DATCO bus for our final one. For basketball, between the boys and girls teams, you know, it could be four charters a week. We went into the season saying to parents, we're gonna reduce the surcharge and we're not gonna be able to provide transportation to away contests. Which we don't like because students who have difficulty, you know, getting a parent to transport them in the middle of the workday could be disadvantaged by that. If we're gonna offer something, we like it to be available to everybody. But we went there because of the situation with getting charters during the elementary run in the afternoon. We, I mean, I think I was, I think Mike Lawler and I are on speed dial with the red phone. But when I call around to other districts, I don't see a big difference between what we're experiencing and what's going on in other places. And we've had, I mean, every now and then you see in the news, like, a district canceled school because they couldn't run a, do a, you know, do a full district run. So we don't like it. We wanna be able to provide, you know, an equal experience for all students for different activities. But I don't think we have it. My perception is that we don't have it worse than everybody else. But yes, we hope All-Star can provide. Any other questions for Jackie Hollow?
At least it'll be budgeted, yeah.
Yeah, it'll be budgeted. Well, but budgeted versus availability, right? That's the, that's like, I see the 4% increase, but that means nothing if they can't provide.
Provided.
Right. We'll have unexpended funds that were budgeted for this year for transportation, just because we couldn't find drivers' retarders. Yeah. Right. But are they making any commitment to trying to get that to, for at least next year?
I mean, they're trying to get, they're trying to.
Because this is two years now, right?
Yep. But to Julia's point, this is a, probably a national, I don't, every single district and super company, everybody's doing the same thing. Some bus companies are actually not doing their own ones, they pick up like our ones to pay, you know, I don't know, you know, names, but they can charge us more than they can charge their own folks.
And Mike Lawler, who's the head of the, you know, that company, he has driven for us in the afternoons. He has jumped off a dispatch and driven a bus to get us someplace. I mean, I think they want our business. They wanna, they wanna make the money from the charter every day.
Yeah, there's, it's a good point, too. There's two people that work in the offices, and both of them, there have been some days where they've both left the office to go out and drive, just to get our, just to get the kids to school.
Yeah, it's been unprecedented in time.
I think we've had two days so far this year where we've had to cancel a bus.
Yep. We've had principals subbing classes, and we've had bus company managers driving buses just to get through with, you know.
It's hiring issues all over. I know that the bus companies are offering, you know, signup bonuses and doing as much as they can. But it's all over. It's hiring.
I think staying on him is the right way to go, though, keeping the pressure on. So he knows we're not happy with. You just wonder, it's a new norm. Like, you know, if you're two years in, like, what's gonna happen? Is it gonna be that parents have to drive their kids to sports now? I mean, that was brutal last year. Brutal. Right. And for some kids, it was actually a hard stop to their participation. So it's really, really important for us to get it back. That's my biggest concern. Like, who are we turning away because they, a parent can't drive them? Some of the kids who needed the most are the ones who. Yeah, exactly.
Julia, me and Jerry are just looking at the enrollment numbers. There's a lot of classes with 28, 29 kids.
What subjects?
Language arts, social studies. You have to forgive me, as a retired teacher, you know the person, I don't want to move into class 30. I love unworked kids, but I don't want that with a child. So the first thing I did when I opened this for Mastic, for Monroe, all of them, was just to go, I mean, here's one, oh, let me see, that's Mastic, sorry, we've got it in front. Mastic has a class of 29, 30. We're just trying to help. It's not putting you on the seat, it's just trying to figure out how you do it.
Right. No, I'm on the seat in July when I make that schedule, long before I'm on this seat. You know, the best class, as far as I'm concerned, is a small class. And so anytime it goes over 25, we don't like that.
And then you've got two language arts classes, you're 28.
Is this, who's the teacher? Two different ones, I think.
Koby and, hold on, hold on, hold on, hold on. You're putting me on this slide.
No, that's okay. If it's Kerry, that's our.
A number's a number unless there's an issue. Are there any issues? Because I mean, a number's a number. It says 28, we are, okay, but is there any, are there any issues to say that that 28 is too many in that subject?
No issue. All the kids are on the exact same level. So what does.
I think if you have 28 kids in a room, it's harder to give individual attention to, in 42 minutes, to every single one of them, harder than if you have 22 kids in a room. So.
Well, yeah, that goes without saying. But is there, you know, a lack of performance? Is there a data point to prove that if we have 28, then there are kids that are underperforming as, because I guess what I'm saying is, I see the 28, you know, and there might be, but is that actually having some negative impact to the kids that's showing out in some form?
I hear you. You know, I think Jerry's reminded me that it's a best practice to have balanced classes. And when you have a 22 and you have a 28, you gotta work harder to make sure you have two 25s instead. And so, thank you.
Is this more of a reflection of the lack of choice in the classes when you go to schedule? Or is it more, is it more people and space oriented?
In terms of how you get.
Correct, how you get to a class size.
So.
I mean, I understand where you have, you know, you have a certain amount of math classes that they get plugged into, but is it?
So it's fifth grade, and we do an assessment to recommend students for pre-algebra. And, you know, 28 kids are in that pre-algebra class. So we have sixth grade, and then there's one class, we can only offer one section of the pre-algebra. It would eat up a whole nother point two of a teacher to make it two sections of 14. So we have one class of 28. So then those kids are a class of 28. When they, somewhere else, there's 28 kids in language arts, somewhere else, there's 28 kids in social studies as they go through their day. So that, there's a, to some degree, there's an imbalance created whenever you have, not every kid doing the same thing. So if we're taking social studies, and there's 75 kids in a grade, I could just divide by three for three sections. But in the places that those kids go and they're not in social studies, if one of them is this pre-algebra, or if one of them is the strings, which is, you know, a place we give kids choice, then when those kids balance out and go to their other places, they could become a large group that travels. So right now, I have 41 kids in sixth grade band, which is a really tough number, because you really can't have any academic class with 41 kids in it. And it's too big for two gym class, it's too small for two gym classes. I would run out of FTE if I only have two sections there. So part of the fun part of the master schedule is fitting together the moments of choice, big classes, small classes, and looking to create equity. And when you think about teacher planning, if I have a class of 14 and a class of 28, I really need kind of two different lesson plans, sort of. Because the conferencing, the workshopping, the stations that 28 kids are gonna do is kind of different than 14 kids. I don't, you know, I maybe could get through my class without the Saw Stop Table if I could meet with every child for three minutes in 42 minutes, kind of thing. So I always want the whole schedule to come out square. And Jerry's kindly pointing out the failures in that this past summer.
I was trying to, I was trying to keep it academic. I wasn't trying to get to my old stomping grounds. I was trying to think of just the academic teacher.
Right. But to Justin's point, a larger class requires more independence and autonomy on the part of the student. So students with sufficient autonomy can be in, you know, larger and larger classes. And in college, they're gonna go to a lecture class in intro psych with 700 kids in it in a stadium, and they'll be fine. But when a kid needs more, there is only so many minutes in the period, and, you know, so many hands-on deck and that type of thing. And so we try to keep class sizes as small as possible so that we have the most teacher time available to the students who need it. But no, it's not a, it's not a sentence, you know, for a kid to be in a big class. It just has to skew them towards autonomy.
What if the kid's not ready for autonomy and needs more support?
Then the teacher will have the 1/28th of the teacher or 1/25th of the teacher. And that's why we try to keep those numbers as small as possible. Because they're 11, they're not ready for college lectures. Right. Right. Don't go for the large intro class. Any other questions about Jackie Hollow?
Anything else? No? Okay, thank you very much.
Thanks, everybody.
Stephen Craig?
Good evening.
Hi, Steve.
How are we doing? I'm gonna do a talk questions to Christine. It was outstanding. So for Mastic, we'll start there. Mastic, as you know, it does also contain the athletic, but Craig kind of put together his own type of information and slides for you. So I'll just do Mastic, and then I'll kind of turn it over to Craig, and not really address the athletics as part of mine, even though it obviously plays into my overall budget. We were able to get one additional FTE request in through to, to your question earlier, you asked the elementaries, were there requests left on the table? There were some other requests left on the table, but prioritizing, as Joe mentioned in his summary, we have a too-high a number of ninth, 10th, and 11th graders with multiple study halls on their schedule. So we're gonna kind of hold off in terms of where that FTE is going to go until our requests are made in end of January, early February, we'll do course selection for next year. So once we have the requests and we look at what we can fill with our existing FTE and what we need to accommodate those requests, we'll kind of let you know where we're gonna go with that. Some of the other things that are in the budget, you know, that of significance would be, over the last couple of years, you know, we've made it a priority to give kids their schedule as they leave in June, which is a great thing. But we also need to account for, you know, the number of changes that tend to come, or change requests that come. So in order to have a day in the summer where all the counselors are in to work and look over their schedules kind of before we release them, because a lot of the work that gets done when the counselors right now come back a few days before staff get done, it would have been nice if it was done weeks ahead of time before the student even had the schedule because they knew about certain things, et cetera. So in an effort to try and make that process much more efficient, I did increase summer hours so that one of the days in the summer where we have a counselor every Tuesday through the summer, I don't know if you're aware of that, that was already in the budget. So we do have a counselor in the building every Tuesday, but so that all of the counselors could be in on one of those Tuesdays, so they could go through their caseload and their kids' schedules. I increased that by a little bit. The amount is on the next slide. It's overall impact on budget is minimal. The department's supplies are up a little bit. I believe Kelly mentioned the flexible seating with the, you know, hopefully, although the uptick now, COVID is in the rearview, for the most part, rearview. We are looking to, you know, a lot of teachers are looking for like, you know, tables instead of just, you know, you know, six rows of five desks in a row, the traditional classroom, they're looking for some tables, some flexible seating. So some of the, most of the increases in the department slide, supply lines are for some flexible seating and also the increased cost of supplies, but it's minimal. It's only about 800 per department, and actually, our overall instructional supplies for the school are actually down 4.2%. So we did make some cuts in other areas to account for some of those increases. College Board, we don't control them, but we are, you know, they, Lisa Peterson reached out to them. They anticipated an increase in the PSAT and SAT costs. So that line went up by the 3,500 that it's gonna cost us to supply those. And we're getting an increased request from students also for online courses via either VHS or Play-Doh. So we increased that line as well because we've been overspending that line for the last couple of years.
It's the VHS?
VHS, sorry, it's Virtual High School, sorry. Virtual High School. So they go online, they take the class online, the teacher could be anywhere, anywhere in the world, actually, not just across the country, you know, and that teacher kind of controls it. We're almost to the point where we may have to consider dedicating a teacher who would be willing to teach a course, because if you do that, you know, it takes point two of an FTE, but it gives us 25 spots for classes. So we're teetering on that, you know, and we'll have to look at that as we move forward because it may be more cost-effective if we have a teacher who's willing to teach a course to go that route. But we're not quite there yet.
It also gives the kid, it gives kids a chance at high school to take.
Take courses we don't offer.
That we don't offer. Or, you know, if a kid is in a singleton, which means that there's only one section on it. I don't know if singletons exist right now. It used to be Latin, like, there'd only be one Latin for, and that was also the same period that, you know, calculus ran. So a kid had to make a decision, like, am I gonna take this or that? This gives kids an opportunity to take some other classes, also with Jesse.
And other languages too. Mandarin, things like that. And Latin, obviously, too. So in terms of specific lines of significance, there really weren't a ton. I did put on the, you know, the amount of the guidance increase, while it says 14.1%. It's $2,500 for, you know, to have the counselors in on one day. You know, so not much. Our supply lines went down. Graduation, actually, over the last, you know, few years, we've been overspending it. So I increased that. Again, I know the 18.9 looks like a lot. It's $2,700. So we're not, we're not looking at increasing it a lot. I do not have, it was a little bit challenging to get the overall increase. I know Julia had the nice number for you, where overall. But, you know, if you put together everything that the elementary and middle school said, there's only certain lines that we actually have control over. And of those lines, most of them came in either at a 0% or a very slight increase or, you know, obviously a decrease because our instructional supplies overall actually went down, not up. So I don't know if you have any questions before we tackle athletics.
Dennis.
I have one. Think the PSAT, SAT costs are going to continue to rise and schools are not using them anymore?
I would hope not, Dennis. I would hope it would go down. I mean, it is digital next year. You know, you would think, it being digital, it would actually go down, not up. But that's not the case. You know, so it's a great question. I can't predict that. I would guess it would go down, though, because I know more and more schools are saying.
Second question, with the graduation costs. I know we had talked about IT support systems. Is that in this or not in this?
So no, that was not part of this. But last year, you did approve about $8,000 to purchase the equipment that we. purchase the equipment that we've been using, BOPS. So that equipment has been purchased.
Okay.
So that's another reason why our, our budget overall went down, because that 8,000 is no longer in this year's budget. But we do have the cables, cameras, and equipment necessary to run graduation without the need to use BOPS.
Good.
He can never retire, because none of us will be able to set it up. I'm just trying, there are a couple of other smaller things that I put in here, and I mentioned them to Christine, so I'll mention them to you. I, I increased our, our police coverage by, by like $1,500. And the only reason there is, I don't like to pass along the cost of police to the kids for like Latin night, our outdoor, well, we didn't have enough peo, we didn't have number of people required to have a police officer at the movie night, but we're doing more of those events. I don't like passing the cost of the police on to the kids. So I did increase that amount. I just think it's something that we should cover. The homecoming dance, I didn't want to pass the cost of the police on to the kids. I just don't think it's right. But that wasn't, it wasn't a huge amount, but I did increase it. I don't think there's anything I mentioned else to you, Christine.
No, it was very minimal. I mean, very straightforward.
Good, good.
So, any other?
It's kind of a cross between both of you. Ambulance coverage, external versus internal towns free, right? So what are you going outside for that?
We, we get it for free.
We get it for free.
We make a donation to the four different EMS companies. So someone's covering us. So we make a donation. Actually, the, the All Booster Group makes a donation on our behalf.
Those events, the events I'm talking about, we don't hopefully ever.
[inaudible].
Football games.
Football games, yeah.
Right, right. Thanks.
Yeah, I'm not talking about police coverage for football games. I'm talking about.
I get you. I was just blending.
Yep. Anything else?
Thanks, Steve.
Craig?
Oh, yeah, pictures.
So I went right for the number, and I put it up there. Sorry. I had an opportunity in the summer to come up and work. This is my first full season this fall, but I had an opportunity to audit the program. I really looked in detail at the budget. I had a lot of conversations with coaches and Steve. And I really just really did a thorough audit of where we were and where we wanted to take the program. I felt like the program in general was funded really well. It was just a few things I felt like we could add that would give the kids a great experience. So in terms of total budget, it's a $62,331.50 increase from last year. We're going to offset that $62,000 with $26,000 from gate receipts, which gives us an increase of about 36 and change. The main drivers are buses. It's a, it's a story that we've been telling. Officials, they go up contractually on a yearly basis. Uniform and can, uniforms and reconditioning, I broke those out, so you'll see in detail why I went up a little bit on that. Safety and security, Steve and I had a conversation, and we felt like it, it was important, we're on the same page with safety and security. So when we can get police officers, because it's not the easiest thing to do, we want them at our, our major events, mainly basketball and football. And the cost of supplies and equipment has gone up. So you'll see that we had to go up incrementally in those line items. I did a little five-year look at athletics, and 1718 is where I want to focus on getting back to, about the 65% of our kids playing sports. Unique athletes mean we're only counting that one athlete. In most cases, we have multiple sport athletes. So in the aggregate, you're looking at 1,000 kids playing sports. So it's a good 65%, maybe 70, depending upon how many, how many of those kids are two sport athletes. Then we had a little, we had a little drop off with COVID in, in 1920. Obviously, we didn't have a spring season. But we're climbing back. This year will be very similar to the, well, it'll be better. It'll be between the 18 and 19, and the 17 and 18. We'll be close to the 1718 with regards to kids participating. And this is a little breakout of our, our line items. In transportation, we're going to, the, the total driver represents about 50%. So we're at $27,000 increase on transportation. We saw in the first season, a 11% increase in, in transportation cost. But we've been trying to do some things, just so you know, we, we've moved a lot of games to later on, and we can do that with high school kids, you can't do it with middle school kids. But we've moved a lot of games to later on so that our company, All-Star, could accommodate us. And we've also moved a lot of games to Saturday, and it's helped. But there's some, there's, there's always going to be those sub varsity games that we can't get our kids to, and those are developmental programs, and we still need to play those games. So we had to go up, so we, you know, we, we made the adjustment in transportation at a $27,000. Officials contractually go up. They go up, you know, pretty much annually, and they factor in the cost of getting to our events, so we really can't control that. But we do offset that with gate receipts also. And our uniforms, I looked at the uniform cycle for the last seven or eight years, and this 2350 was kind of an anomaly. And I think it had a lot to do with that uniforms were able to be purchased in the COVID year, so that they were in pretty good shape from an inventory standpoint, and that's why that number was low. But the real number is 32 to be able to maintain the uniform cycle. I've always wanted, kids, kids should be able to have a uniform in their four years here, a brand new uniform. So, so somewhere along their four years, they should be wearing a uniform. I always believed that. And some, some uniforms last longer than others. But for the most part, their four years, their four-year window, their, supplies went up, you know, those has a lot to do with the cost of goods and services. We increased our, our police for hockey and basketball and football. And went up a little bit on our event staff.
Next year, there's a basket, shot clock in basketball.
Yeah, that's.
Another person there to run the shot clock for varsity games.
So that rep, that number really represents that extra person running the shot clock.
Is it boys and girls?
Yes, just varsity, though. 35-second shot clock.
And you purchased that already, right?
We did.
Yeah.
Is that it? Oh, and then, and then reconditioning, we went up about $3,000, because I wanted to add some field hockey goalie equipment. And I also wanted to add the boys lacrosse helmets. They, they need to be reconditioned, too, and they weren't. So we have to get those reconditioned. They last a little longer than football helmets. They, football helmets get done annually. These things are three years. So then, on the 82.5 for other athletic costs is huddle. Huddle is like probably our most important technological tool for our coaches. It breaks down, it's film. It breaks down all our film for our coach, our, our, our kids, and kids use it for recruiting. And, and I think if I had to have just one thing for our kids in terms of supplies and equipment, it would, that would be huddle. And if you want to compete, you got to be able to, everybody's got to be able to have an opportunity to see where they're making mistakes and how we can correct them, and, and what things we can do to get to be better. And then the la, and then the trainer went up $1,000. That's contractual. And I think, I think that's it. Any questions for me?
Going back like three slides, you basically, $36,000 ask, 27,000 of that's transportation.
Yeah.
So, you know, just put.
Well, I did include, yeah, I did include revenue in there, just so you know.
Right.
Just the gates re.
Well, they gave a huddle you just mentioned, which kids will use to get into colleges or whatever with it. Does that burn CDs for them as well?
You can burn a CD, but it's all digital now. It goes right to them, all to college.
It's hard for the kid to do that.
We can put it on the VHS.
It's not a VHS.
VHS.
You want to be.
It's a big difference.
For the transportation, just so you know, for the transportation, we did, we, we talked with Ron on what would make sense to try and, you know, predict, right, we're, we're shooting in the dark here, but we, we did work with Ron to, to see. We did have, the, the fall season was pretty much complete by the time we met with them. So we took that actual expenditures from this year and only did 4% increase on the fall scores, because those pretty much ran. But for the, for the winter and spring, you know, we don't really know this year. So we did, based off of the fall being 11% increase, we did an 11% increase on the winter and spring. So we didn't just, the 27 isn't random. There was a formula of five.
Makes sense.
But, you know, we, we obviously tried to work with, with something on that, too. Yes, sir.
Joe, should we go back to having our administrators get their CDLs?
It's funny, you should.
Don't laugh.
Yeah, you should laugh. When the elementary principals were here, I was telling them, when I retire, I'm going to buy a bus and just charter.
There's some special education events.
Jeff, you had a question?
Yeah, as far as the crowd control, outside, I mean, you have the police in the crowd control. What would constitute crowd control?
Security, like our security people. They'll work a game. And, you know, a, a police officer is not going to get into the woods with a kid who's acting out. We want somebody that they see every day. And a lot of times, it's me, you know, so, but I don't get extra money for that.
It's usually a site supervisor.
But we'd like to have a site supervisor, especially when we have extra events going on, you know, at the same time. So that's where we are with that.
And then the, the gates, you're using the, the gate money to offset some of the cost. Do we have a historical breakdown of what our gates are? And is it pretty stable year over year as far as?
Joe, Joe had, gave me the number to date, so it was pretty impressive.
With the exceptional last two, yeah.
Right, I, I saw the COVID years. I mean.
Yeah, it was tricky, and we had gone through it.
It's in the budget book, I just don't know where.
Yeah, it's right at the end.
So we were in around.
People in sections.
To date, right, 23,000 that we brought in. And we got a whole basketball season.
Doing section three on page 36.
We know, we should charge for everything.
You'll see, like last year, we, we went conservative with the 26,000, because you'll see, we've already, we've already, you know, we budgeted 21 for this year, but we already brought in 23 in the fall. So last year, we brought in 35. It was hard, the, the previous couple of years was, was very, was very difficult to try to figure out. It was 23 in 1920. That was actually the COVID year, but don't forget, gate receipts are football, boys' basketball, girls' basketball. All those were played that year. So that 23 game is kind of a good number. So we kind of took a shot at the middle there, between that 23 and the 35, knowing that we're trending well this year. So a lot of times, it depends, too, if, if the Thanksgiving game is home, like it was this year. Depends on the type of season you're having. We had a really successful football, football season, which brought in, you know, brought in a lot. We had some really interesting matchups. You know, we've never played tumble before, so that's why I think you see 23,000 this year. Never played St. Joe's since the 1980s. So all those things add up.
Craig?
Yes.
Traditionally, those three games are where you would charge as far as gate receipts?
So far, yeah, but I'd be probably looking to start charging down the road for anything in the stadium, lacrosse, boys' and girls' lacrosse.
That's what I was getting at. Is our other districts doing that?
Oh, yeah. The district I came from before, we charged for everything. And my number was around 50 in gate receipts, revenue, so.
So something we can consider down the line?
Definitely something to consider. My, my only hesitation with it is what was your surcharge in?
Exactly.
And so like, a lot of times, the people you're charging to go to the game are the same people that are paying the surcharge.
Yeah, I've heard that. You can't have it both, you can't have it both ways.
Right, right, right.
You can't charge this amount of money and then still charge them. They understand the events, like football, it's a community event, and they can live with that. So it is a slippery, slippery slope with that.
Right, right. Okay. Anything else?
Can, can you speak to the condition of our facilities compared to other schools in and around the state for a similar-sized school?
Um, the existing facility we have, like, if you look at everything, is top-grade, but we definitely could use additional facilities. Another, a, a second turf field would do tremendous, it would be tremendous for this school and this community. We would get a lot out of it, you know. Typical turf field gets in the, in and around 3,000 hours a year versus a grass field, which gets, you know, 300. With lights, you're giving kids and youth programs opportunities to prepare and get, get out there earlier than normal, get, be able to play a game on a rainy day, obviously, all the benefits that have a turf field. This school would support a turf, this, this program would support a turf field from a standpoint of usage, without, without a doubt. So I think that is probably the only thing that's missing. You know, that would, that would put us on equal footing of every, every team, every program of this size and school scope, in my estimation.
Would you say that most schools our size have a second turf field?
Yes. In this dirk, yes. Thank you.
Yep. Thank you.
Anything else? No? Okay. Thank you, gentlemen. Joey, what do you have? We shall move on to unfinished business, which we have none. We also have no new business. So Mr. Stevens?
Motion to adjourn, Mr. Chair.
A motion by Jerry. Do I have a second?
Six thirty on Thursday.
Our next meeting is 6:30 on Thursday for the bed, budget workshop. Please don't forget that. Do I have a second on a motion to adjourn? Christine, Shannon thirds it? Any discussion? None? All in favor? Unanimous. Thank you. Good night, everybody.
Thanks, Shannon. Take care.